The board is returning back from closed session at five twenty eight P M. We do have announcements from closed session. The board approved the following appointments to full time, temporary at will classified administrative assignments. Daniel Vega is acting assistant director of institutional technology through December thirty one, or until that position is filled on a regular basis, whichever occurs first. Acting assistant director, monthly salary will be based on admin confidential range seventeen step E. Mr. Vega will also receive a monthly stipend of ten percent of classified salary schedule range thirty one step H from September one through December thirty one, or until that position is filled on a regular basis, whichever occurs first for retaining network administrator duties. Salary and stipend will be prorated for any partial month of service. Denise Kaduri, also Denise Kaduri as acting director of public affairs and communications through December thirty one, twenty twenty three, or until that position is filled on a regular basis. Acting director, monthly salary will be based on admin confidential salary schedule range nineteen step A. Miss Kaduri will also receive a monthly stipend of ten percent of classified salary schedule range fifteen step E from November one through December thirty one, twenty twenty three, or until that position is filled on a regular basis. For retaining web and content specialist duty salary and stipend will be prorated for prorated for any partial month of service. So, thank you, Mr. Vega, and thank you, Ms. Kaduri. We will now, as noted in our change of agenda, move on to our student trustee report, which I will consolidate also, or excuse me, or associate students president report, which I will consolidate also, Geo, with your report, student trustee report, is that right?
Yes.
Give it a report if you.
That's good.
All right, and I know you guys are gonna do it together, so I did want to introduce you both. And, Ms. Sharma, you have the mic when you're, and too, if you guys, you can present at the podium, or you can sit down to whatever's easy and flexible for you guys.
Good evening, this is Dr. Powell and the Board of Trustees, this is my trustees' report.
Yeah, hello, I'm currently student vice president, my name is Priya, and we would like to start by showing a presentation. So, over the past few weeks, we've been actually very involved in the housing project that's been going on, and we just wanted to give our opinions and just our perspective of what's been going on, so. So, there was a retreat for the housing project for ASNBC. So, what's been going on is just us, like, as ASNBC coming together and just showing our ideas and just showing, like, what we want from this student housing that's been provided. And honestly, it is a great opportunity, we feel that we're being heard, and it's just, that's the picture that's like we've been taking. And, yeah, overall, it's what happened. These were the questions that were asked, such as community wise, like, what does community mean to you? And let's, like, what lets you know that you're part of a community and what makes you feel included? And those are the answers that we were given by students who actually go here. And again, it's very, it's an honor to have our voices being heard for such a big project as well. As you can see, like, we prioritize being safe, like teamwork and team building, and just mutual respect was a big one for us. And we also did an activity where we were asked to write down our values from those that are provided on the list, we were asked to choose our top ten. And then we were asked to choose three from the top ten, and then we were asked to choose our priority. So, from that, we were able to create that list of values that you see on the right. And from that, we actually did get to, like, figure out what we want from the, um, from the housing project and things like that. And again, it was just a wake up call as well, like, what we prioritize and what, like, these values mean to us as well. And we were also asked questions such as, like, what activities and events we would like to focus on for student success? And again, we were given ideas such as, like, group study, like involvement, like foster childcare, and just, like, having basic needs at the housing, like, when it gets developed. And so, again, we're just giving our ideas and we would, like, explain what we would like from the housing project. We were also asked to just speak on what events we would like to focus on respecting others. Again, we prioritize having our A's and just, like, people who would, like, understand what it's like to be a student and just understand what's like, what it means to be a student here and being part of the teams as well. So, we also included things like having cultural fair, being nice, there is like a cultural potluck. And these are just ideas that we would really like to be part of, like, when dorms are introduced to this campus. We also had activities and events focused on health and wellness. So, we actually had an idea that they'd be cool, like, someone was very, very, like, advocating having a pool. Again, this isn't, like, something that's on the record, so we just thought it was very funny. And having, like, movie nights and just, like, group exercises slash sign of cheats. And just, again, mental health day, that's, that was a big one for us. And just game days and just being, like, a part of this community and just understanding that everyone's here to, like, help everyone out as well. Yeah.
Excited. So, this is the fun part. By the way, this is all together by Dean Robin D'Angelo. As you see, once we got into the job side, got the housing, we were provided by safety helmets, safety vests, and we're like, towards the building and stuff, like, two bedrooms, studios and stuff. And it was really amazing, cause like, it was new, and you never imagined, like, college having that, like, you know, like, being able to have that. But, um, we were able to see, like, how was it gonna be planned out, how's it gonna look, and stuff like that, and opportunities and stuff. So, in the middle building, there was one for family, for, like, you know, like, kids who are married and stuff, and the other ones were, like, for students and stuff. So, it was a great experience, especially our tour guy, I think I remember his name, this was Tony. But he was a great guy, he was giving us the whole background of the whole thing. And it was looking amazing, as you see, you know, and then we took some photos as he saw the whole, the whole, as you can see, you can actually see Robin D'Angelo taking all the photos and stuff, so it was a great experience, which I think was a really great time, and I wish we had more time to be able to, like, look into more of it. And we were the first person, and the students, to be able to go see that. So, I was really honored to do that, and I can't wait till, till it's finished. That's about it.
That's a good report. Any questions from the board?
I, oh, I was just wondering if the slides were gonna be added to, um, or docs so we could look at it later?
I think it is.
Is it?
Yeah.
Where is it? Oh, okay, I had not done that for.
Fair enough, yeah.
I just wanted to comment, um, thank you so much for your, um, your presentation and for all your work for coming together and sharing your voice of, um, what the student, um, life can look like and the environment can look like. Um, it's, it's so important that we have your voice, um, to inform that in order to make this a welcoming community space, a nurturing community space. Um, I'm really looking forward to hearing more about it. Um, and I just also want to let, to let you know, um, the agency I work for, we have a therapy pig. So, when you're ready, we'll bring O B by the student housing for a little therapy session. Maybe? Thanks.
I, I wanted to ask, is there gonna be follow up, um, after this? Are you gonna continue working together, is this group gonna, um, like, how are you gonna follow up to make sure that some of these goals are met?
Yeah, we will continue to work with Robin Darkangelo and just continue to see what we as students can, like, bring to this project, cause again, it is such an honor, and we are making history in a way by providing, like, our input. We would very much like to provide reports, just updates on what's going on with the project.
Just wanna say thank you, President Sharma, for your report, and thank you for consolidating all of this feedback. Um, you know, having quality student feedback at this time on the project is essential because, you know, we're really in the early phases of envisioning what our support services are gonna look like, how we integrate, uh, classroom experiences and curriculum into, you know, this living, learning environment, how we create that. So, we can't get enough good quality student feedback. And I know this is just the tip of the iceberg for some additional engagement, both during the construction process and even after we have students in residence. Um, you know, something Dr. G B, I know we talked a little bit about is just, you know, student engagement, student resident council, these types of things that, you know, will help ensure that we continue to get that quality student feedback. So, happy to see this and really look forward to digging into the details of your report, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, student trustee Alejandro Martinez, and thank you, President Sharma. We really appreciate you guys being here and, um, yeah, doing exactly, exactly what, uh, Dr. Powell, uh, just stated. So, uh, we will go to a public comment, uh, which is an opportunity governed by the Brown Act. It's an opportunity to hear concerns, perspectives, and differing vantage points. The board is not able under the Brown Act to engage in any level of conversation or discussion, but we look forward to the opportunity to gather community input. The board will devote up to fifteen minutes to review a comment to the board of trustees regarding any subject not appearing as an agenda item for this meeting, but under which the board has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will occur at this time on such items, and each comment shall last no longer than three minutes. Catherine, do we have any public comment?
I see no public comment.
And no, no hands raised in there, I haven't received anything either. So, we will move on to our consent calendar, any questions on consent? Catherine, do we have any public comment on consent calendar items?
No, we do not.
As soon as I would, welcome a motion for approval. Thank you, trustee Olson, for your motion.
Second.
And your second trustee, Kishanef, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Consent is adopted unanimously. And we will move on, let me see, Dr. Warren all here.
What's up?
Oh, even better, what a, a, a long lost but familiar face, uh, here in these parts, uh, to lead our discussion on the mission and vision and values statements, we have Amanda Badgett.
Good evening, board, it's a pleasure to be presenting our mission, vision, values as it currently stands to you this evening. My name is Amanda Badgett, I teach art history here at the college, but I'm before you tonight because I am the faculty co-chair of the planning committee. And Robin would have been here, she had a personal obligation, so she's entrusted me to bring this to you. So, you may recall that a, you were consulted almost, I guess, a year ago, fall twenty twenty two. We wanted, as a kind of kickoff of this process, and I say we, I was a member of planning and budget at that time, but Robin took your initial input, knowing we needed to revise our mission, vision, values, or actually develop a vision, um, after ten years of the old one. So, in any case, uh, we really began in earnest last spring. We were still at the budget and, the planning and budget committee, but the work group rolled up its sleeves. Dr. Moore may have been, like, five hours on this campus, and we pulled her in. And, um, and we began drafting initial statements, which we then, um, put out in the form of a survey to the college community. At that time, got a good bit of feedback and began continuing to refine the mission. And then, as we moved into the values, we had a forum on campus. And then, to follow up in the fall, we had a workshop on Flex Day. And so, through all of this, we've had multiple points of input from our faculty, our staff here at the college. And more wordsmithing happened, and we got it to the point that basically you have it this evening. This is not the last stop, but one of the last stops on, uh, this document's tour through various constituent groups. So, it's gone to the academic senate, the classified senate, administrative senate, and ASNBC just last Friday. So, that's a long-winded introduction, uh, to what we now have. And so, we, our intention really from the beginning was to keep the statements fairly concise. In the earlier version, which I think all of you have in the standups, in those Lucite standups, um, we wanted, rather than just a list of values, to have values with a follow-up kind of expanding statement. And so, that is what we came up with. So, we're here nearly a year later to ask you what you think. And I'm happy to answer any questions as well.
Any questions or comments, trustee Iverson?
Our mission is convinced, because it was.
Is your microphone on?
Yes.
Oh, it's on, yeah.
Oh, I just said, I like the fact that we filing on our mission statement down, because it was very cumbersome. And this is concise, it's clean, it gets to the point, and I think we have all done a good job, so thank you.
Thank you. Um, we too also found the, the last version a bit cumbersome. It's important to, just as context, at the time, the ACCJC was sort of encouraging that sort of spell out exactly what you do. I will share with you a statement from a member of the ASNBC last Friday, who said, you know, this older statement, the one in the standup, is, uh, talks about student success, but this newer version, if the college does all of this, there will be student success. And so, it doesn't talk about it, but in a sense embodies it. So, we felt that was pretty good response from one of our great students.
Yeah, and I, I totally agree, um, with that and trustee Iverson's comment. I, I know, said a year ago, I know it's maybe not the sexiest thing to say about the mission statement, but, you know, kind of like an elevator speech, and I could not do that, what our, our existing mission statement right now is. And this is definitely something that is easy, it's kind of something that I feel like I've done, but this is just a lot more eloquent way of saying it, so I appreciate everybody's time, because I know how difficult. There's some sort of saying about writing in a succinct manner, and it's something that affects, it takes a lot longer to do so. So, I appreciate, appreciate that effort.
Absolutely, absolutely, and, uh, we are also excited to bring this entire process to a close because, of course, it's this document that will help shape the educational master plan, which is also underway. In a perfect world, one may have preceded the other, but we are very nimble here at Nap Valley College. We'll, we'll make it work, I'm sure, so. This is to be developed.
I had a question on the, um, the to be developed, the numbers, you know, at the top and the footnotes, sorry.
So, thank you, um, I, we are in the process. In fact, we already have some draft language to what we are referring to as the foot, well, they are really, the footnotes with the superscript there. So, we, those were the last thing to get developed, clearly. And it was my understanding from Robin and her conversation with Dr. Powell that the hope was to get the, the meat of the document done. And so, these footnotes, as I say, there's some draft language that the planning committee tomorrow might take a stab at, but we wanted to get the bulk of this to you tonight. Um, the other thing to mention about the footnotes is that this set of mission, vision, values, these statements will live on our website too. So, something like, um, student, uh, so the footnotes will then become something, a hyperlink that you click, for example, um, student-centered, and the language that we're in the process of developing, the footnote will come up. So, it's quite different, really, even from ten years ago, where this will most often, members of the community, our own students, will encounter this in a virtual environment, you know, on our web environment, in addition to our little posters and so forth. So, one of the ways that will live is as a link in, um, on our webpage. But, in hard copy, if you will, those will be fully developed statements, not extensive, like, master's thesis footnotes, but another statement too.
Definition.
Do you think, oh, sorry, go ahead, please.
No, I, um, I just wanted to also recognize that, you know, the commitment, that's very obvious in here for following these values and what they, eventually, the definitions, what they mean, and, you know, and in its entirety. Um, I think something that we've kind of changed and adopted is anything we have on our agenda, anything we put forward is tied to board goals. So, it would be great to be able to have that same idea with everything that we do on campus and, you know, in our community, tied back to our values and what that means and how that brings the students forward.
Absolutely, thank you, trustee Deluna, I would agree.
And so, this will come back for the board for effectively a second read in next month.
Yeah.
Okay.
And if there may be some changes, we'll, we'll see. Uh, no, I don't, I don't think so, I kind of summarized it, so. So, any other questions, otherwise I'll let you get back to what we do, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Badgett.
Night.
Good to see you. We'll move on to, uh, an action item twelve point one, uh, annual financial and budget three eleven report to the chancellor's office.
Thank you, President Dodd, um, I would apologize in advance, I failed the, the elevator speech class in my communications program. So, this will take a few more minutes than, uh.
Yeah, hopefully not forty pages of work.
This is the, um, I'm gonna present to you a very, um, brief, uh, rendering of the, what we call the, um, three eleven report, CCF, um, C three eleven report. It is the annual financial report for twenty two, twenty three, um, for the college, the financial report, that's submitted to the chancellor's office and becomes the basis for the audit of our financial statements. So, our auditor will take this information, our finance, these, um, financial statements, test, and review the documents to determine that they are an accurate representation of the college's fiscal position and strength. So, it's a fifty-page document, it doesn't fit into the elevator speech, but I'll try to, to keep it brief. Let me just give you a few, um, uh, a few, uh, headlines here. First of all, the college finished its Fund eleven and Fund twelve in a, in a positive financial position, which is, uh, we are trending in the right direction over the last few years. So, you and my colleagues should take some pride in the fact that we are moving, moving in the right direction. Our reserves, uh, were increased to, um, trustee Baker will remember this number, because I think she quoted it a few months ago. It increased to fifteen point eight eight percent, um, as we, as we finally closed her financial statements. You recall that we are projecting in our last year's budget, ten point, a ten point three percent reserve. Uh, and at fifteen point eight eight percent, it represents the efforts that the college has embarked on to address some of the financial challenges of our past, some of which included the SERP. Uh, two SERPs as a matter of fact, also included some, uh, very close monitoring of our expenses, particularly related to, to personnel expenses and new hires. On page four, do you want to scroll up a little bit, there's, there's a lot of numbers here. I promise I'll only go through most of them. Page four, right in the middle of the page, you'll see a percentage that says forty five point two eight percent. Forty five point two eight percent is, is the fifty percent law, uh, number. You may know that the, the state requires community colleges, actually K twelve and community colleges, to devote fifty percent of their budget to in-classroom instruction. You may also know that we have, we have fallen short of that number over the past few years. Some speculate that it's been more than a few years, but certainly the past few years that we have, uh, we've looked very closely at it. The good news is that we've made progress against the fifty percent law. Last year was forty two point seven two percent, the previous year was, uh, just over forty one percent. So, at forty five percent, um, uh, point two eight percent, we are making progress in that direction. And of course, that's primarily two reasons. Uh, the SERP one and SERP two was one reason, our ability to reduce expenses on the, on the wrong side of the fifty percent, if you will. The second piece is that we've been able to increase faculty salaries by twenty percent over the last three years, which has helped. And, and the third, I mentioned there were two, there are actually three. It's careful analysis of expenses that, that have fallen into Fund eleven that can clearly be attributed to and supported by Fund twelve revenues. So, those three efforts have, have yielded a positive, uh, response to our fifty percent calculation. So, that's all good, but we still have some work to do there, and, and we need to develop a strategy to kind of move us, uh, move us closer to that fifty percent threshold. Page twenty four provides a summary of Fund eleven revenues. In, in summary, it, it indicates, uh, our increases in property tax, how they have followed over the last, um, certainly this most recent year, but certainly trending in a positive direction over the last, um, it, they have actually increased every year since we've become a, a community-based district. And Fund, and page twenty six provides the detail of expenditures for both instructional and non-instructional activities. The last two years, we've, we've trended toward reducing those total expenses, which has helped us both in our reserve area and in our fifty percent law area. So, I'd like to leave it there, uh, it, I'd be happy to go over any particular numbers or areas uh, that you would like to, or subsequent to this meeting, you would like to. You will see this information again as initially with the audit and finance committee, as they review the draft audit. And again, at the board meeting, at the December board meeting, as you review the audit, uh, there, uh, the, um, the review of financial state and inspire independent auditor. So, those are the highlights, I don't view this as any lowlights here, uh, but certainly trending in a good direction. We do have lots of demands on our Fund eleven reserves and our Fund eleven budget. Um, and we're gonna see more demands on that as we move into negotiations with classified and faculty, um, the faculty, uh, constituents groups. So, we want to be careful, our, our reserves are okay, they're not exactly where we'd like them to be, given the demands and, and the contingencies that we need to consider. So, with that, I would, uh, certainly open, um, open the presentation to any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves, are there any questions?
Been shaking hands.
Means it was very good, uh, presentation.
It hit the elevator speech threshold, yeah. Thank you.
But don't go too far, Mr. Reeves, uh, we have a Fund eleven update as of September thirty, twenty twenty three.
I'd be, I believe trustee Olson is well-prepared by now to deliver this. This is the, um, this is the, the revised, um, Fund eleven, it has two revisions. First of all, uh, let me just orient you again, um, column A is the descriptor for revenues and expenses. Column B, C, D, and E are historical numbers. What did we do, uh, in the last four years? Column E is shaded green because while we have closed the financial statements, we have not audited them yet. But I think you can rely on them with a great degree of confidence. Auditors oftentimes come back and do a little adjustments here and there, but these are the financials we're presenting. We just, we always get a few adjustments here and there, but I think you can, there's, we have a high degree of confidence in these numbers. Column F is the board-approved budget, the budget you approved, uh, this past September. Column G are the prior year actuals as of nine thirty twenty two. So, what it allows you to do is compare column G to H with what, how do we compare to our expenditure, our revenue or expenditures at this very time last year? The three-month actual or prior year to current, um, th- this is a variance column. And, and it tells you what the difference is in those, in those two years, three months, actuals. So, three months, we are three months into our budget year. And I just referenced that very top number on the right, where it says three over twelve equals twenty five percent. That's an important indicator, as you, if you wanted to do a brief su- a review of the budget, you'd look at that percentage, twenty five percent, and compare it generally to all of those percentages on the right side of the, of this, of this schedule. And if we, we should be hovering generally around twenty five percent. And if we, we should be hovering generally around twenty five percent on those. If we're having significant variances there, and there, there are good reasons for variances, but it's also a, an alert to you and my colleagues across the campus that says something's going on here either we don't know about or that we need to take a closer look at or get more information about. So if I can go to the right column here, our, our revenues uh, we're at about four percent of our revenues. We are about two hundred and forty thousand dollars less at this point at the third quarter, excuse me, after the first quarter than we were last year. Many of you well know that our property tax uh receipts um don't come in exactly on the day that we'd like them to. And uh, so that's, it's, this is a bit reflective of that. On the expense side, we're moving down to salaries. There's an important note here that Dr. Moore helped clarify at an earlier budget meeting. The faculty salaries um are understated here at the third quarter because their salary increases have not been included at this point. So retro, retroactive compensation will go out um pretty quickly, I think, the end of this month. And so you'll see an adjustment. This will jump a bit um to, to a more predictable level uh at the next month's report. Does that make sense? Okay. But at this report, we're trending at about twenty percent of our uh, twenty percent of our budget uh at this uh, at this point in the year. It should actually be closer to twenty five percentage you might expect. Our total benefits, we're at about twenty four percent. We need to keep an eye on this because if our salaries are only twenty percent and our, and that benefits are twenty four percent, we're trending since there's something going on here that we need to keep a close eye on. If I were you, I'd like to be asking questions about why our computer um so, so software and books is trending at five hundred eighty percent more than, than budget. But what I would answer that question by is we had one expense um in our police area for, for some uh subscriptions or materials, but the number is so small that it, it, it doesn't, it's not of concern at all. So you'll notice that we're only two thousand eight hundred and seventy four dollars over in a forty four million dollar budget. I'm not really concerned about that unless I see this number continue, the percentage varies continue. So our total books and supplies are trending at about twenty eight point uh, point eight six percent. Again, this is reflective largely of expenses that are made at beginning of semesters. Um, and they typically drop off mid semester and then escalate again as, as a new semester begins. The, the next area total, other operating supplies, we're at twenty six percent. We're pretty much on target. Our capital outlay number is, is at forty three percent. I'm a little concerned there that there's an expense there for AV, some AV equipment there that, that uh is a one-time expense. Uh, but I need to, I need to keep an eye on this to see how it's going to play through the rest of the year. Bottom line is our total expenditures are running at twenty two percent, twenty two percent. Um, and we are, we have spent five hundred sixty thousand dollars less this year than the previous year. So um, from my perspective, not a lot to be really concerned about at this point, but a few areas that we want to track carefully and be sure that we're, we're going to meet our budget objectives for the year. And with that, I would, I would uh entertain any questions.
Any questions? Trustee Baker?
Just curious if you could tell us what rentals are.
Rentals, outgoing rentals?
Um, I'm not sure. It says rentals and it's a hundred, it's at a hundred and twenty five percent. And it's not as, as much of a small number. So just curious.
Hundred and twenty five percent. I did look at this and I honestly don't remember exactly what they were. They were not for facilities, however, they, it strikes me as they were maybe for some subscriptions of some kind, uh, perhaps um perhaps uh, computer, excuse me, uh, IT subscriptions. But if you allow me, I will uh get you a clearer answer and, and send it to you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll go back to that. Let's just finish up this. Thanks, Catherine. Any other questions on? Thank you, and thank you to uh Catherine for reminding us that we didn't approve, uh, take formal action on the three eleven report. So we'll go back to um action item twelve point one, and I would welcome a motion for approval to send it to the chancellor's office.
I'll move to approve.
Thank you, trustee Deluna, for your motion, and thank you, trustee Olson, for your second all in favor. Any opposed? Three eleven is approved. Thank you again, Catherine. Yeah. Yeah, and, and we will uh go to our clarity report and update. Chief Wayne.
Good evening, board. Thank you for having me. Um, I'm here to present our annual clarity report and also give some other information, safety information, um, some updates within the college police department. The good thing is our clear numbers are not high, so we have a little bit of time to, to cover some of the other items. If you have any uh questions or need additional information, though, just remember this is all on our website along with our college police annual report. So we have the clear report that covers the prior three years and our annual reports, I believe we cover the prior four years. Next slide, Catherine. But here's an idea of our calls for service that, that we have in our cases um for the, the past four years. You'll see a little dip within twenty and twenty one, understandable. Um, those were COVID years, so we didn't have as many people on campus. And we also had a, a pretty substantial dip in our services as well. Didn't do as much motorist assist and fingerprinting, but still, we're, we're kind of slowly going back up. It's nice to have people back on campus again that we could help out when need be. Next slide. One of the big focuses within our department this year was community involvement. I am very proud of our staff. They really went out there and, and took the lead. Officer Alva Madrigal, she has taken over the Special Olympics torch run for all of Napa County law enforcement. So that is the, the torch run that we go through the entire county, starts all the way up in, in Calistoga and goes through. Um, so she's taken that over. This was her first year with that. Um, we had, let's see, uh, dispatcher Jasmine De La Cruz helps put on and plan the walk a mile in her shoes. I also want to give a shout out to Dr. Powell for being our keynote speaker at that event. Uh, very well received. I got so many compliments uh that we were lucky to have someone like that leading our, our campus and uh three of our officers and Dr. Powell did walk a mile in red high heels. So you got to give him some props for that. Huh? If, yeah, if you can see, you gotta look closely, but, but uh.
Can we get them a little higher next time, though?
We got to keep them safe, right? You know, zoom in on that one. We were actually the, the most represented law enforcement agency in Napa County there. So we're the smallest department and the most represented. So it was a really good event and um, just for a good cause. The other event that we partake in annually is the national night out. So we're able to, to do a booth there representing the college and get, give out some of our, our college gear. So that's always a fun event. And last but not least is a shock with a cop. So supporting uh Napa youth within the community. And that personally is my favorite. It's, it's great to have uh, a youth within Napa and go around and help them pick out items for their, their family members and it's just a fun, fun event to connect. Along with uh, all of that, we did our, our normal crime prevention classes, really focused on the see something, say something that, that uh, we push out there with all of our posters in our classrooms. Patrol, that's huge. That's the number one deterrent. It's just being visible out there within our community and uh crime prevention through environmental design. So doing our, our work orders within facilities, they're you know, they're struggling for staff, I think, with a lot of our other departments and they're out there working hard, but we're around the campus and so seeing when lights are out or when bushes need to be trimmed up and submitting those, those are huge. And so facilities is great to jump on that and, and get those jobs done. Next, Catherine. Here's some of our safety resources on campus. I want to highlight the um our college police advisory committee. That's something that's new this year and has already come in really handy. I, I really like being able to hear more from our campus, uh, things that are out there that we can improve upon as a department and then also things that are needed within our campus community, different classes. And so it's helping us get a, a better pulse on, on Napa Valley College. And then we have our emergency procedures, our NBC safe app and our NBC emergency messaging. That's something where we transition companies for it. Uh, it's a lot cheaper. So my boss, you know, I gotta, I gotta get the little, the money there. But uh, it's something our, the company that we had was being bought out and we're able to get, it's a grant that's out there for, for, from the state. Uh, we're having a little bit of some bumps with the transition, but I think we're, we're almost there. So we, our alert that we sent out today was successful. And uh, the training that we did this morning with cabinet, if you, if you see some of the cabinet members needing a little extra caffeine, it's because I had them here eight o'clock in the morning doing some emergency training. So um, but they were, they were troopers with that. So um, we're, we're just fine tuning some things there, but, but our emergency messaging is successful. And we'll just uh continue to, to tweak that a little bit. Next slide. So here's the, the meat of my presentation, our Clary Act. This information went out to everyone at the end of September. It's been up on our website, I believe, from the beginning of September. The Clary, for, for those of you that don't know, started back in the early nineteen nineties. Uh, Jean Clary was a student on a university on the East Coast. And while she was on campus in her dorm room, she was actually raped and murdered by a fellow student. And um, her family was appalled when they looked at the crime statistics that were happening on their campus and around the area. And they said, we would never let our child go to this place if we knew. And so they, they were the, really behind this push and it did come out in the, the early nineteen nineties. And what we have to do um is publish all of our crime statistics along with a bunch of the reporting procedures and the resources available to our campus. So if you look on our website, the full Clary report or student rights to know report is a thick packet. And um, I just, I like to tell her story because this is a tragedy that has resulted in something good and something that we've continued to do and it's grown throughout the years. Um, a lot of people don't know about it, so that's always part of our education when we talk to our students. If they're transferring, if they're going somewhere else, I'm like, look, look at these statistics. We're lucky here. Our, our statistics are pretty level with, with most community colleges. I will give you all a warning, those are going to go up when we have housing on campus. That's just the way it is. So we, we do expect those to go up, hopefully not by much, and most of that will be education and the things that we're putting together now. If you look on this chart, so this is the chart for our main campus. We also have one for our upper valley campus. It's three categories. One is on campus, so that's here at Napa Valley College. The other one is public property, so that's our surrounding area. I will say the majority of the statistics are coming from Kennedy Park and we work with Napa PD in getting those statistics. And then the non-campus centers, the, the only one we have right now that we get the statistics from is American Canyon High School. The two highlights, I want to say that we have had um a small increase in our burglaries on campus. Um, not much, so that's not much to note there. And the only other real statistics that we've had are liquor law violations. If you go down a little bit, Catherine, there they are. So they're not arrests, like for law violations. One was a staff member, one was a student. We've dealt with both of those in-house, so no arrests were made with that. Really, the, the only other thing to note, any of the statistics at the non-campus centers did not involve our students. So we haven't had, in those three years, we haven't had any of our students be a part of that. They were American Canyon High School students. But here's some of our effective practices that, that we really go by at the college police department. Um, stress upon community policing. It's the guardian versus warrior mentality. You know, we're out there to, to serve our public and protect them. We're not out there creating issues or escalating situations. Um, and I think the most important is taking ownership in the community that we serve. All of our, our staff want to be here. Um, and it's important, it's important to uh, the people that we serve and it's important to us that we take that ownership in our community. And we're very excited to have housing coming. We're, we're working on ramping up and, and doing our best to work with Gray Star and, and all the things that are going to be associated with River Trail Village. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Chief Wayne. Any questions?
I, I do. On the alert system, the system you had before, are you transferring anybody that signed up previously to the new system? Or do we need to re-sign up?
We're working on that now. Hopefully we should be able to transfer because right now if you log and try and do it, it says you're already a part of it. So we were promised that they would transfer over, but uh, that didn't happen. So we, if we can't figure out how to do it, we'll send out probably another uh alert email notifying our campus that, hey, we need to re-enroll in that.
And then one other question, um, with a valley campus and San Lena Police Department now there, how do we share that? I mean, does, if anything happens on campus? Is that us? I mean, is that, because I, I've been there a couple of times and there is an officer there, but I don't know if it's all the time or.
Yeah, so it would, um, any statistics that happen there, we would still then quote here.
Okay.
Um, but it's rare to have anything happen up there. Um, it, our, we've had a lot of zeros, including the apartment complex that's next to it, that that's included as well. So I think it's only going to be more safe having the, the police form. I hope so.
Thank you very much, Chief Wayne. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you. Well, good to our constituent reports. Um, we had President Sharma's report. Uh, Danielle Alexander's report is posted and live and in the flesh, Jacenia Cota. Uh, for, you're up for your report.
Thank you.
Good to have you here.
Good to hear. All right, perfect. Um, it's an honor and blessing to be here in person with you all. Thank you for having me. Uh, the classified union, we've been very active, very proactive. Um, we've been building uh toward well, rebuilding a solid foundation and are striving to uplift each other. Um, we are creating spaces to come together, like our ice cream social to reconnect. Um, with so much change that has occurred and all the change that's forthcoming, um, it's, it's just necessary. Um, I would like to highlight tonight uh two classified professionals that have recently stepped up. Uh, John Martinez and Mario Van Carpe, who will make up our um contract action team. So our contracts action team will be working closely with our union exec board and our bargaining team for the work that's ahead of us. The classified union will be submitting our sunshine proposal for a successor contract to the November board meeting on uh behalf of all classified professionals. Um, I've been in active conversations with Dr. Powell and Charo regarding concerns um and the impacts of the district's ongoing reorganization and how our workloads have been greatly impacted. I really commend the district's leadership as it pertains to the level of conversations we're having. I see positive change. Uh, change that allows us to have an equal seat at the table and for that, I'm so grateful. Uh, we lastly want to bid farewell to our colleagues, Jorge Calderon Gonzalez, Officer Nito and Katie Mills, and we wish them luck. And we also want to welcome the Daniel Troll, research analyst to the NBC family. This concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Jacenia. Thank you for being here. Uh, next, we have actually the only uh report we have, or constituency group representative that we have here is Ms. Christine Tapia. Who is on Zoom.
I hope you can hear me. Um, having some video issues here, so I, I might just stay off video, but um, I wanted to wish the members of the board cabinet and the Napa Valley College community uh good evening. The last couple of months have been quite busy for administrators as we engaged in efforts in the fall, in the areas of policies and legal updates, our mission, vision and values, and also professional development. So in September, administrators and confidential staff participated in our legal updates workshop um where in collaboration with our faculty and classified employees, we reviewed and updated um existing policies to ensure compliance with current legal standards. Um, as managers, you can imagine that um this information is really key to our work. We make decisions based on this information. So we are continued, uh, we continue to be committed to making certain that our policies are practical, feasible and aligned with the actual workings of the organization. So you will see us in November for round two of that workshop. Um, in terms of the mission, vision, values, we've had extensive discussions um uh regarding the refinement of the mission, vision, value statements. Um, generally, uh, the administrative group is appreciative for the Um, generally, uh, the administrative group is appreciative for the new format um, that was developed by, uh, a work group, um, under the planning committee. And shared that despite the conciseness of this new format, the proposed language really captures the currency of our work, our aspirations for students and the values that guide institutional decision-making. And so you've seen the version, um, the proposed final version of the mission, vision, values that was presented by Professor Amanda Badgett. Um, uh, earlier this evening. And so I want to especially lift up the last value, um, which is social justice. Um, it was a direct contribution of one of our deans, uh, so Dean Luis Alcacer, um, brought up the adding of social justice at, at a flex day input session. And this value is really important for us. Um, it serves as a call for collective action to address systemic injustices, um, to be an institution that is anti-racist and to build a more inclusive and equitable environment for all of us. Um, most especially our students. So lastly, professional development, we are wrapping up the four-part DEIAA training this October. And at our last training, we participated in an exercise called the Equity Walk, where we put ourselves in the position in the shoes of our students and assess the level of equity and inclusivity that they experience in various areas of campus. Um, it was a very powerful and eye-opening exercise that we feel all employees of the college should experience. And we invite the board to do the same, to engage in the same exercise. So, um, lastly, in closing, I just wanted to give a shout out to the administrative and confidential group. Because despite our ongoing challenges with staffing and workload, we collectively continue to demonstrate a really commendable dedication and effort towards advancing the institution, um, for overall success, um, centered in what our students need the most, um, in equity and also in building this community for all of us. So this concludes my report. Um, have a good evening.
Thank you very much, Christine. Couldn't agree with you more. We will, I think, uh, move on to president and cabinet reports.
Thank you. If we could look at the OAA report first, that would be great. Thank you. So, um, we are now approximately midway through the fall semester. So an enrollment update, you can see that, um, we are still larger than we were last fall, which is good. Seven point three nine percent, uh, larger. And we are serving, uh, more students as well. You can see non-credit enrollments, which are always small. So those percentages different, differentials look very big, but we're talking about small numbers. There's a little drop off from last year at the same time. Couple of notes about both of those. Um, in the credit program, we do have some courses that begin in the month of October. For those that are general education, we see that those are, are full, full and with wait lists. We also have some more specialized courses that are not full. So, um, what this tells us, there's, there's a model called eight plus eight, which is an eight week in the first half and an eight week in the second half. That is, um, we don't quite have that yet, but the second half, uh, performance of these classes indicates that that is probably very promising for future semesters to look at. And we do have students who are coming to the college who don't perfectly align with our normal start date. And also students who, for any number of reasons, may drop a class, um, after a few weeks in it and need a replacement course and it's beyond the normal add drop period. So those latter half classes serve an important role for those students as well. In the spring, um, we will be offering some additional non-credit courses. We have a new series of, uh, certificates and on credit that are geared toward workplace, uh, soft skills primarily. And so we're going to be, um, starting with just a couple of them. And they, they will be great options for the community and for our, um, businesses. I wanted to also highlight our progress on guided pathways. So we are, um, finalizing program maps for all of our certificates interview programs. And we are using Program Mapper, which is, uh, used commonly throughout the state. We will post them to our website and that is, uh, to, in support of spring semester. We want to make sure everything is visible for students as much as possible as they, um, start their enrollment. And priority registration begins very soon on November seventh. So that is something that we are all gearing up for. For, um, I wanted to explain a little bit about this in case it's a new concept, the idea of a home college, which is the designation that, um, the CBC OEI consortium uses. That is part of a system-wide, uh, set of online courses offered by institutions across our system, where if a student cannot get the class they need at their particular college, they can look and take a class at any of the other colleges, still stay as NBC students, take classes here, take a class somewhere else, still get their full financial aid award and, um, not experience delays in their time to graduation. So we have a couple of pieces that we need to submit, uh, and update in our, um, canvas tool, as well as a submission to the, um, CBC OEI Consortium, which we're in the process of doing. And we anticipate that will be, um, what is called home college ready for the spring twenty twenty-four semester. Um, another very big dramatic, uh, development that you may have heard about in the Napa Valley Register is early college at New Tech High School. So early college is, um, you may have also heard of middle college. So middle college is the same concept. That is when the offerings are offered on a college campus. And early college is when they're offered at a high school campus. So, um, we, the two of us, New Tech are our partners, have teamed up to develop an early college. And a group of us, including Dr. G and myself, um, met with NVUSD leaders on Tuesday to do some initial planning for this. Um, the first cohort of students who are starting in this new model of early college will begin in fall of twenty-four. And the intent of early college is that all students who graduate from New Tech High School will, um, complete with at least twelve units of college credit. Um, and some of those who, for whom that is the goal, they have the capacity, the ability, if they choose to, to complete an associate degree at the same time that they graduate from New Tech High School. So that's pretty amazing. And I have to, um, really commend, uh, the NVUSD leaders and particularly the New Tech High School principal, who, their commitment to serving students and really making a program that meets the needs of all of our populations, but particular attention to our disproportionately impacted populations is really phenomenal. So we're very excited to be partnering with them. And, um, lastly, I wanted to give you an update about the educational master plan. So since the report at our last meeting, uh, the steering team has met, uh, to help develop the survey instrument. So we have three forms of input for the EMP for our community. The first is a survey tool, one for employees, all employees, and one for students. And that went on, on Monday. Um, cabinet has also met with the, uh, EMP leads. And as a note, we are, um, partnering with West Ed Consulting Firm. And they met with cabinet to discuss priorities. We also have developed a communication plan about how we're sharing information about the EMP development process. And constituent groups have received information about the input opportunities. Just to note, this number that I have here in the final bullet, um, that there are sixty-two employee responses and we didn't yet have a student response count. It is now seventy-seven students and seventy employees as of this morning. So, um, it's starting off strong, but you know, as I will tell anyone who asks me, my hope and goal is that every single person will respond to the survey. Um, that probably is a little lofty, but, um, we really want to get everyone's input. The surveys close on November third and there are two additional opportunities. And we'll highlight those on the slide that is next. So, um, there are three components of input. And of course, there is a lot of other data gathering, um, and planning that is occurring aside from this. These three opportunities are for many, many people to be involved. So, um, we are holding two input sessions and everyone is welcome. We have sent the invitation out to a very long list of community, um, and educational partners. The first one is going to be on Wednesday, November fifteenth, from five thirty to seven PM in person in this room. And the, uh, second one is on Thursday, November sixteenth, from twelve to one thirty via Zoom. So our hope is that, um, everybody in the community who is interested will join us for one or the other. I mean, people can come to both if they would like, but it's going to be the same format and content in both sessions. Those are open to our employees, our students and our community. Then the survey that I just talked about is open through November third. And the final set of, um, engagement activities for our larger populations are the focus groups, which will take place between November sixth and seventeenth. And we'll have some targeted smaller group discussions that will be informed by the input that we're receiving from the input sessions in the survey. That, those will help build questions to, um, focus the focus groups. And so we're going to have a faculty focus group, we're staff focus group. The, um, team leaders are meeting with the NBC Foundation. And then we're going to have a number of different student focus groups. And we want to especially make sure that we are, um, encouraging participation from all of our populations. Uh, we do have some encouragement and I want to thank the NBC Foundation for providing financial support so that, um, for student participants, they can receive a twenty-five dollar gift card for, for their time on those dates. And also we have a drawing for the student, um, who participates in the survey for a hundred dollar gift card. Um, so hopefully that will, uh, make their time more worthwhile, but we really, we really appreciate the maximum input as possible. So, um, we hope to see you at the input session, one or the other of them. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you have.
I just have a question on the home college. Um, does that mean that if students do go and take classes at different campuses, that they would not have to chase down their transcripts when they transfer? Like, does that affect it in any way?
Yeah, it's, it's so great. So, um, the school, they get the, the class from that's external to us must send the record of their completion to us. And we've been meeting with financial aid and admissions and records to ensure that we have the very easy way for people to see those as high priority items. So it doesn't get lost among the many other communications that occur. And that financial aid is aware that they completed the class so that they are, um, entitled to their full financial aid award. So it's, it's really a beautiful system.
I have a question about the early college. Um, so students have the potential to graduate from New Tech and start as either a sophomore or junior at a four-year college. Is that right? Would they graduate with their AA?
If they graduate with their AA, they would transfer directly to a university unless they wish to get another AA or a certificate with us.
Mm-hmm. Got it. Yeah. That's really cool. Thanks. Thank you.
Good evening, board trustees, community and, um, colleagues. Want to start off first by acknowledging that we are in Filipino, Filipina, Philippine next history month. So recognition to our Filipino community and, and the, the long history of, of resilience and resistance. So, um, wanna lift that up. And, um, wanna start off today by, by talking a bit about our, our, what we've been doing student affairs over this past month. Um, we've been busy, the, myself with the student affairs deans, um, visiting our local high schools. So a big part of the, the work that we do in the fall semester is really around getting into our community, um, meeting with our school partners, um, and having conversations with them, discussions with them around how we continue to partner better with them, what we can do to serve more students and really to build, build pipelines. Um, so you'll see we've visited, we've visited nine high schools up and down the valley. So we were, we were really busy doing that. Um, but the, the visits are, like I, I've just mentioned, they're very powerful. Now we get to engage in, in really important conversations around really, um, doing this work in a much more collaborative way. So even from the conversations we've had, um, a lot of work's already kind of begun around that. Uh, three themes specifically, um, popped up or, or just overall, we, we saw, um, that we are currently working to address. One of, one of the themes is, is the need for our, our, our schools to work closely together, not just at the beginning of the fall semester when we're doing these high school visits, but throughout the year. Right? So this ongoing relationship with them, um, is really important. We heard this really through all of our high schools, from Calistoga to American Canyon. It's, it's great to see us in the, in the fall, but, um, you know, then how do we continue that conversation? How do we continue the discussion? How do we continue the building? Um, and with that, the second theme really was, was identified around really identifying or re-identifying, because we've done this in the past, but I think with COVID, we, when we went away from this model, obviously is really identifying a representative Napa Valley College liaison, if you will, um, that'll work closely with the schools. So, um, having that, those folks, uh, uh, identified that our school partners know who to reach out to and how to connect. So that's, that's the work that we're, we're, we're doing right now. And really to, to help ease that onboarding, the enrollment processes that we're stood is, is, is key. So for counselors, our administrators, our, our partners to know, this is, our high school partners to know, this is who I can reach out to at Napa Valley College, um, this is, was key and important. Um, and the third, the third theme, and this is one that I think we've already done a lot of work around, but continues to come up and, and, and really demonstrates how we need to do this even better, is identifying key dates throughout the semester, throughout the school year, for our high school partners to come to Napa Valley College with their students and experience NBC. Right? We began this last year with pilot programs, our exploration, uh, our expression days, um, our registration days we've done, but really being much more intentional around that and, and developing some, some long-term plan around that. Um, power of our students walking on our campus, um, hearing from our staff, connecting to our folks is really, it's, it's about building that sense of belonging while they're still in preschool, right? So that, that, that is really important and key and work that we want to continue to build around, um, and do. So those are third theme. And so we are currently working in student affairs with the deans to identify, the student affairs council, to identify how to address each one of these things that came up. So more to come on that, but, um, I think the conversations, uh, the discussions is so pertinent, important and critical. So it's really, I really appreciate that. Also want to recognize, um, Dr. Sherry Tannison, the Career Center staff and her team. Um, on Tuesday, October seventeenth, this past Tuesday, we held, we held a very, uh, effective and excellent job fair here on campus. We had over forty employers, eight community resource tables. In addition, there is a flu vaccine clinic provided by Napa County Public Health, also food truck. Hooked it up with two hundred, uh, uh, the first two hundred people free tacos. So, um, that was, that was a good opportunity for, for our, our students and for our community. Anytime we can see our community and, and help our, our students in that way, our staff, I think is, is a huge, huge win. So, um, again, special thanks to the Career Center staff and to everybody who supported them, um, in, in their work. Have, as they do some very transformative work in that space. And finally, just want to remind you all, November sixteenth is our high school breakfast. So I have some handouts here for you. Save the dates, uh, seven forty-five to ten thirty in the Performing Arts Center. Um, we'll, we, we're going to be hooking it up with some chilaquiles and, and some breakfast burritos. Working on the million now. So, uh, it'll be a, it'll be a, uh, an opportunity to connect and build with our partners and just be in community together, as we planned, uh, at a really secure our community. So, thank you. That concludes my report.
Will there be transportation for like a valley students or anything?
Absolutely. Yeah, that's very critical. That's important. That's definitely a need that, um, our partners have brought up. And we've actually done that, where we provide buses for our Calistoga students, our Santa Elena. So yes, that is, that is a priority and, and all of our schools really can. But, um, in particular, our valley is that we want to make sure that they are way to get it. Yes.
And I just want to thank you. Um, I've heard so many just great comments from community members and students or future students, you know, that they just are now looking more seriously at coming to Napa Valley College and going to college at all. And the families really appreciate all the outreach that we're doing. Um, so I really appreciate all your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Working on and administrative services, we discussed the budget a bit and the audit update. Our, we are scheduling our audit, uh, to be reviewed, um, by the, uh, by the board, uh, just after the, uh, just after the finance and audit committee reviews it. Uh, and so that will be the December meeting. Our twenty-three, twenty-four budget, we just, we just spoke about. Uh, I won't spend any more time there. I just want to spend a moment on institutional technology. I, I will share with you, um, that the presence of, uh, our new management team was felt on day one. And, and they continue to, to address the challenges we have. And they continue to find things that we could be and should be and will be doing, uh, in terms of managing our IT resources. So anecdotally, uh, you know, I'll just describe everything I've heard has been very positive, uplifting. We clearly have a lot of work to do. We clearly have a lot of work to do, but I, I, I would offer that. That the decision to move in this direction has been, has been authenticated and verified. So we will be asking them to do a, our management team to do a report to the Board of Trustees in the near future. To give you an idea of where, where we've come from and where we're going. I would offer a student housing up to update. In addition, I, I had a few moments to spend with trustee Giovanni. At the Imagine Workshop. I wasn't there the whole time, but it was quite inspiring to see students engaged. And excited about the prospect of this living, learning opportunity on our campus. So thanks for that invitation. We also visited Santa Rosa Junior College about a month ago. And it was revealing a tour of their site. It's a beautiful site. Ours is better, but it's a beautiful sight. It was an important meeting because we were able to understand the kind of challenges they had opening their facility. And while, while it is full. A few challenges emerged for us, which, which allows us to pay close attention to them. The number one challenge is addressing food. What do we do about food? We, we have built kitchens in these units, certainly for the more traditional. College student down the hall kind of kitchen. But we all know there will be a group of students who are launching out of their own homes that don't know how to boil water. And so we need to be, be able to figure out how we're going to provide a basic, basic support for their food needs. And so that it's clear to us that we need to have, we need to answer the food question as soon as we can. I'm reluctant to simply add a board fee onto the, onto the rental rates. I think that. Might have, have a deleterious effect. So we need to look at opportunities for funding. Perhaps from the foundation, perhaps from our lottery funds, perhaps from other sources. To provide, provide some modicum of food support for students arriving on our campus. If you'll, if you'll note the, the construction, it's turned out to be a very attractive facility. And I think it will be quite, quite appealing to students both, both close by in our service area. And as we have students look at Napa Valley College from places beyond our service area, I think it's become a very attractive. Destination for students pursuing their, their educational goals. The Ash landfill is a work in progress. We're still working with the county. I, in a previous report, I indicated that we had a signed agreement with them. That was a misstatement on my, on my part. Now, we continue to work with Lang and our consultant and some legal counsel to get to the point where we have a firm agreement with the county. On the interim mitigation plans there. Finally, I would just give you an update on, you may know that we have operated without a director of facilities for. A year plus and we are in the midst of a, a search for that position. And anticipate being able to bring a recommendation to Dr. Powell and the board. Likely the December meeting, but perhaps November. So looking forward to that. And that would conclude my report.
Thank you all. You all have my report, my written report, which is an update on our accreditation process. For which we'll have a presentation at next month's board meeting. And that concludes President's career report.
Thank you, Dr. Powell and cabinet members. And we will go to standing committee reports. I don't know anything. Is there anything from DOS trustee Deluna? I know audit and finance will be meeting November, early December. As VP Reeves just mentioned and. Yeah, I think that is it. First, we'll go to future agenda item requests. Any future agenda item requests? Looking, looking trustee Iverson.
The one about doing something for Senator Dodd. And I think we need to probably. Sit down and figure out what the next steps are for that.
Do we have a list or are we done with everything? Did we start over?
All right, we'll see. No other. We will go to trustee and board chair reports. Student trustee, do you want to? Have anything else to add from a nice presentation?
No, no, y'all for today.
Again, for doing it. I didn't compliment you on your nice shirt too, by the way. I like that shirt.
Thank you.
Seems very good. Trustee Kishinov.
I just completed the commercial driver's license preparation program. That is put on by the Teamsters through our college, which is a free ten day program. That helps you prepare for a class A, class B. And the reason I took it was because I wanted to learn to drive a forklift. So I got my certificate of completion and I wanted to give a nod to Latitia Narano, who is a great facilitator. And did a great job making everybody comfortable.
Thank you, trustee Kishinov. Trustee Rios.
They can, they can go on the Napa College website and search forklift. I think the next class is in December, January.
I'm just wondering if we're getting that out of the industry.
Thank you.
It's, it's a fairly popular program, particularly the forklift aspect of it. In fact, we've had graduates from the forklift training. Who matriculated into our actual employee group. So yes, very, really well known. I think it was, there's a lot of history about the, this particular program. It came from, I think, many years of community requests. This particular training, but we are always looking to expand awareness of our career programs, whether on the credit or not credit side. So yes, very much always looking to expand that, that reach.
Great. Thank you.
Trustee Baker.
I don't have their report. I think, I don't think that's ever happened.
What's wrong with it? Trustee Austin.
Yeah, I just wanted to share that I had the privilege of being invited to and attending the first two day N V U S D guiding coalition. It's a six month process that community leaders, staff, students, over fifty of us gather. To envision design and design the direction for Napa Unified School District. And there was quite a bit of conversation about N V C and our partnership, N V U S D's, our partnership with N V U S D. Dr. Mercedes called out, Dr. Powell, I think you were supposed to be there, but you had a prior engagement. Maybe, okay, yeah, there's two more two day workshops. But it's just really inspiring to hear that they're thinking so far in the future and really including us in their thoughts in, in, in terms of dual enrollment. And, you know, pathways to success for our students starting in elementary school. So more to come on that.
Trustee Iverson.
No report.
Trustee Deluna.
So I just, I was supposed to be there too, but I, I had a prior engagement as well. But I will be there next time. So I'm, I'm glad to hear that you and Dr. Powell will be there as well. It is very exciting. I think I keep, I just want to emphasize again that, you know, I am hearing from community, community members. That they see the college more in the community and I just really appreciate it, not just up valley, but everywhere. I know my, a few of my nephews and nieces are coming back to school and I look forward to hearing from them about how much they love it. And also just so many comments about how engaged Dr. Powell is with the community and what a great job. He's doing and really engaging the schools and the administrators, the superintendent and the trustees for N V S U S D. I really made that clear to me. And so I thank you. And I just really appreciate all the work and the changes that have been coming about this year and I look forward to even more. So thank you.
Yes, trustee Austin.
I just wanted to share one more thing. I know that we recently had a loss at N V U, at N V C, tragic loss. And I am the current chair of the Napa County Suicide Prevention Council. And we are doing a lot of work to prevent suicide in Napa County as well as support survivors of suicide. We have a strategic plan that I, along with my counsel and Health and Human Services developed. That's open for public comment through next week. And it outlines all of our plans over the next three years to really kind of step up our efforts to prevent suicides in Napa County. So I encourage you to look at, and the public to look at the Napa County Health and Human Services website. And search for Suicide Prevention Council. And the links for the plans are up there in English, a plan in Spanish, as well as a survey to gather.
I'd trust you, Iverson. So more on that, not to go backwards, but to the future agenda items. We've talked in the past about doing like a joint board meeting with N V S D. And the Napa County Office of Ed. And I think it'd be nice to see that happen. With our board though, a joint board meeting?
Yeah, I think that's on the list. Wherever it lives. My report is my wife is an angel. She's forty one weeks pregnant. It's her birthday today. So I will be adjourning this meeting noting that. We will be recommencing November sixteenth. And hopefully I'll be a father of, of three at that time with a brand new baby girl. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, for my wife's sake. Man, we'll adjourn at six forty nine P M. Thank you.